There we go.
Make sure there's no white paper.
Okay, it is 9:00 AM. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended, copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Ruler, would you please lead us?
Yes, please join me. Dear Father, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask that you grant protections to our first responders, our military, both at home and abroad, and all who serve in our communities. Without their sacrifices, our lives would be much less. We ask for your guidance today during this meeting so our actions reflect your will. Also, let us not forget those in our community and abroad who are less fortunate than us. We ask these things through your name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on February 27, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Commissioners' meeting that was held Mar- uh, February 27th of 2023.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next order of business is to consider the following. First, claims and treasures receipts.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts as submitted with the option to make adjustments later if necessary.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley. Wiems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next order of business is to receive and order filed the fee report submitted by the Register of Deeds.
Chairman, I make a motion we receive and order filed the fee report submitted by the Register of Deeds office.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
How are you today?
Good. You're better looking than that guy that's easily sits in that chair. A lot better. Lot clearer.
I don't see my account number here.
Commissioners.
The Commissioner's watching. He heard my comment.
And he understands he's easily replaced.
It won't take long, will it?
Your dad has one of those too, but his doesn't light up.
She says, "Don't drag me in this."
Must be the wrong ones.
Couple of these only got three lines on them, sir. Oh, I'm tired. Let me get to sign on the side of...
I didn't realize it till after I started scribbling.
Well, they've eliminated that.
Got most of those weeded out, haven't we?
So, close and beautiful. So, I just made now. There's where Jeff left it.
Oh, good.
Is that looking all right?
Seems reasonable.
Let Chris hide come up then.
No. We need to learn some balance.
Looks like that's a good spot. Can't open it up.
Mm-hmm.
That looks like my signature. Morning.
Morning, Judy.
How's it going?
Good. Good.
We promised not to make you go away and then come back in here.
You just had to pick that scab, didn't you? Just had to.
That's what I'm here for.
Bet Judy forgot that, didn't you, man?
I wouldn't want Judy to forget.
I've known Judy a long time. She barely forgets.
What did he do? He snuck in. I didn't see him coming.
You arranged some nice weather last weekend.
What's you in that storm like?
Good for you.
Cabbing here, here, or here?
In the west.
Cabbing?
We don't have any cows anymore.
Okay, that's good because the storm coming, oh, pretty most of the people got them popped out already maybe. There's probably quite a few on the ground.
And that's exactly what it does. Okay.
It is 9:15. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended. First order of business is to approve minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on February 27, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting that was held February 27, 2023.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wiems.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hugley. Woodruff.
Aye.
Certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. County assessor Julie Stinger indicates there are none. Appreciate that. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Okay, we will, at 9:16, wow. Hope Commissioner Brunson's paying attention.
Yeah, he's watching.
9:16, we will adjourn at time certain as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Julie.
During the meeting?
No.
After.
We're just gonna...
Because I think he's on the agenda for the 13th for something else.
It'll keep though, if he doesn't.
So, this is something Chris had talked to me about. He asked me to get the building grounds and the lead department and the road department on how they're handling it. And so I have some feedback there. Looks like this is...
I think so, yes.
Building and grounds, and I had talked to Booker about that just last week. I don't think he was in the conversations with Jeff and I.
What had they been doing?
So, the road department wasn't doing anything with them. According to Jeff, they just never sent them in. I talked to Dick about it and thinks that they were stopped sending them in and getting the rebate and then applying against those purchases. Um, we have changed...
Yes, thanks. Is that kosher?
I've believed it. I think Chris is for people who are in the area and use that. Um, Booker said he had no idea what building grounds was doing with them, but they were starting. So, I'm gonna look for some and take it to him. And have to take him on how to do that.
You should make sure Tammy is also kosher anyway. I think it would be most kosher to make sure.
And then we're gonna have something added to the employee handbook on that topic so everybody knows.
Okay.
And building and ground was doing the same thing. They were sending them and using it.
Okay, it is 9:20. Next order of business is to discuss and consider starting date and wage for the Lincoln County Building and Grounds Director. As you recall, last week we had interviews and Mr. Booker Boyer was put in place as the Lincoln County Building and Grounds Director. The Personnel Committee met last week. And thank you, Tammy, for the information you provided to us. First question that I have, Becky, is starting any pay change in the middle of week would be a better time for your bookkeeping. Is that correct? Like the middle?
It doesn't go in there. Well, for a rate. I mean, this would be hourly. In English, you're gonna do a salary.
Salary.
So, we can start it whenever the list... Yeah, lay down the wages.
Tyler, can we backdate this to the 1st of March or not?
Probably not.
Okay.
At this point, no.
Let's have it be effective as of today then, if you don't have a particular date. Joe, does that sound reasonable to you?
Sure sounds reasonable. Is there a reason that... I know there was when we originally went away from salary. I remember that. Uh, no, I have no reason not. I just answered my little question. Sorry for asking it aloud.
Okay, the Personnel Committee had looked at the current salary and looked at a slight raise. The Personnel Committee is suggesting $26.43 per hour as the wage. And if it works well with the bookkeeping in the clerk's office, we'd have it effective as of today if this is approved.
The only thing on his, which is no big deal because this is what we have to do. We can't put in two rates of pay for the same pay period, so it'll just be under other pay. But we'll make a note of that, I mean, on our bookkeeping stuff, so we know why.
$26.43. Anybody have any discussion in that regard?
Well, Chairman, we might note that the vacated spot was at $29.78. This is a rate, this is a bump in pay for this individual of roughly...
Roughly, a little over $2.
$2 now. But we're under, substantially under where we were, so it gives us room to move him up. That seems reasonable to me.
Um, we have a scale set for that position, a low and a high end. And this is, gives us room to...
Gives you some latitude.
This is a little bit below halfway between those two marks. But it's still like Commissioner Wiems says, it is a, it is a raise in pay, extra duties and such. We felt that would be appropriate. What is your pleasure, colleagues?
Make a motion that we, uh, Booker Boyer has already been named as the Building and Grounds Supervisor. I would make the motion that it's effective today at the rate of $26.43 an hour, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Second.
See, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you.
Took less time than I did to apply. He was really impressed with you.
Yeah.
Keeping you and me. He definitely couldn't have opened the individual's department.
He was rare. I was also impressed. He knew I had those kind of...
I think he was more oriented for any, and he wasn't boastful of his abilities.
I'm buddy at too. It's just like, I just didn't attend. I think give it a try.
And all that talk that I told you, I certainly found something that was within his background, because those kind of talents...
Yeah, I agree. There should be something somewhere here.
Yeah, both by... Where'd all your bosses go? You don't have any adult supervision. She was forgiven.
Yeah, yeah. Depends on what were projects we got going on, but absolutely. I'm surprised that we didn't, weren't taken advantage of it. If you can get a good, if you can get a deal like that, come with me. I invite you. You have way more pull than I do. I'm just, I'm just glad it was only that.
Yeah.
This must be Jason's son who's working for Carol. Does? I think it's. I saw that and I thought, what's he doing with that? Oh, it's not him. Not this guy.
Speaking of that, Tyler, do we, do we need to set up something, uh, negotiations? Have you responded to our letter, to their letter?
No, I didn't. Always out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't want to forget it. That's true. Okay, I like the sound of that. I vote stall.
It is 9:30. Our next agenda, item, excuse me, is to discuss and consider application by Thai Waters for Waters Administrative Subdivision on property located at 18700 West Oregon Trail Road in a R1 Rural Estates Residential District and described as Lot 6 and 7 Kelly Acres Subdivision in the north half of Section 4 Township 13 North, range 32 west of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Hi, Judy Clark, Planning Administrator for Lincoln County. You should all have received a copy of a cover sheet and then a location map and then a copy of the preliminary and final subdivision. What this is doing is taking two residential lots, combining them together. And planning staff has no objection. The subdivision is in conformance with Lincoln County's comp plan and zoning regulations. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
One could make the guess that Mr. Waters owns both of those lots?
That is correct.
And what is the building on the lot six?
Um, just a tiny little shed. Yep.
Looks like fairly straightforward. Plan information is in agreement with this?
This one actually just comes straight to you because there was no real huge hit up with anything.
But you have no issues with it?
Absolutely no issues with it. It's just consolidating it together makes it a little bit easier for him because when you build a building, you have to go from property line. So, if that property line is right down the center and he wants to build close to that property line, he wouldn't be able to. So, by wiping that out, he can plant a building in the center if he wants to.
Very good.
Makes sense. Colleagues, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application by Thai Waters for Waters Administrative Subdivision on property located at eighteen seven hundred West Oregon Trail Road in an R1 Rural Estates Residential District as described as Lot 6 and Lot 7 Kelly Acres Subdivision in the north half of Section 4 Township 13 North, range 32 west of the 6 p.m., Lincoln County, Nebraska.
If I second that, I don't have to read that back.
Here, you want my change?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wheeler.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
All right. Thank you, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Gets you out of here on time.
That was quick.
Yes, it was.
Appreciate it.
We're, we're trying to redeem ourselves a little bit.
She just got up and left me, Jerry. I don't know.
I'm sorry. Technology, like, that's my concern right now. Sorry.
I'd be more concerned with your sidekick, but that's.
I probably would be.
Lisa looks like she can handle it.
Probably not, probably not the first woman that did steam.
Probably not.
She's done a pretty good job keeping me in line so far.
That's, yeah, a part-time job. They're supposed to both turn on same time.
You got it to work. Seeing you're all worried.
I know. And we have sand too, so.
We do?
Yeah. I recorded you.
That's probably not a good idea.
I believe Dave is on a beach down south somewhere, so we're coming up, we're on our own with technology. Somebody coming. Well, now that one's. One's working and one's.
But he's got, he's going off, he's on a beach.
I'm, I'm thinking he probably does. He was really excited to get away. Yeah.
If I couldn't review the slideshow, he could work and drop off. Oh, okay. I don't. As long as we get it there. There you go.
Yeah, now they're there. Tammy? She left, she left the room. Well, kind of.
She didn't want to be here for the train wreck. Get off the ship before it sinks. Bail out. She's gone.
Nice. Yeah.
Now, can you dance it?
We're good with five minutes to spare, huh?
Look at that.
Oh.
Too fast, too fast.
Except it's got a life of its own, apparently. Chemicals lately, but that's, that's not a bad thing.
Is it?
Did you tape her?
Yeah, of course he buys a lot. It, that has really gotten high. Yeah, it'll be here before you know it. That's usually what happens, as soon as you leave the ground to go get something.
We'll be with you before long.
Oh, you're fine.
We need, we need to sign that.
Not on my instructions.
Today's at six, right?
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah, I told you so much.
You see where it right now?
I got up working for you.
Thanks. Yeah. Joe fixed it. Dave says patience. I don't have patience.
Grand lizard just sitting in the corner.
See, it's patience. Dave always says patience, Tammy, patience. It has to have time to think. But I don't know about the sound. Well, your mic, I guess. Yeah. That's true.
I'm excited, but I think in a couple minutes you'll be able to tell Commissioner Buzel what's going on.
Yes, exactly. Everything's run smoother, doesn't it?
If there's any connection.
No line, yeah, wait, hold it, wait.
Trying to do something right today. You have no one to do.
You got your kids to school? That's ninety, ninety percent of that.
Just gotta survive the rest of the workday.
Yeah. I'm gonna stop complaining about my diesel bill at home. Well, maybe not, but.
Why not? That's okay, they just have days nineteen towards eight, what's in them?
You're doing way better than somebody else I know in being conservative.
Okay, it is 9:40. We will move to our next agenda item. Visit North Platte Annual Report and Update. Please tell us who you are, please.
Good morning. I'm Lisa Burke. I'm the Executive Director of Visit North Platte. And with me, I have Brad Heisel. He is our, the chairman of our board at Visit North Platte. Thank you.
Great.
For letting us come and speak to you today. I'm gonna turn it over to Brad right away.
All right. Guys, I really appreciate the opportunity and time today. More importantly, I'd like to thank you guys for your service to the community. It's really appreciated, especially with us working in conjunction with you. As you guys know, we've had some changes here in the past. I wouldn't necessarily say changes, I would say more like along lines of advancement. Because now with the advancement that we have been able to do to become a 501(c)(3), we can really collaborate with not just the county, the city, and other people that are doing things, but we really can align with the projects that are going on in Lincoln County to enhance the experience, not only our tourist field, but our citizens of this community field as well. So, thank you for that opportunity. Right now, we are leaders in the state getting that done, so we're gonna continue to move forward. Granted, we're in our infancy right now, but I see nothing but blue sky ahead of us. So, thank you for that opportunity. And the way that our board is structured now, it has changed a little bit. As you can see, I don't think I need to read those names, but you can literally see the people that are involved and the organizations that are involved, which allows us to collaborate and all get in line and move forward. Okay? So, on to one other big aspect of change that I know has been kind of a concern, but we feel like. Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm. I'm not a very good follower.
With the changes that we made, we do have the bank accounts now that we wanted to make sure that we put in checks and balances. Right now, the main accounts that we have require two signatures, and those have to be the exact members of this board, of the Visit North Platte Board, to make sure that things are running smoothly and in the right direction. We do have one other account that is used for, what would you call it, Play North Platte, the sports.
Sports registration.
Yeah.
Similar to our petty cash account that we had with you guys.
For sure. But all those are constantly reviewed and made sure that everything's moving in the right directions and we're doing things the right way. So, it was my job to kind of introduce the structure of the board and the reason why we did what we did and kind of talk about those accounts a little bit to make sure that we are all doing things the right way, because that's our main goal. I'll turn it back over to Lisa and let her present on her stuff.
Okay. So, part of, or all of our job is to promote Lincoln County. And there's lots of ways that we measure ourselves and how well we're doing throughout the year. One of the major ones that we look at is our, is the lodging tax collections every year at the, within the, within Lincoln County, because as you guys know, we collect more than just what's in North Platte. We collect any hotel or Airbnb across, across the county. So, we finished 2022 up 6.89% over 2021 and, which was, you know, it's quite phenomenal because if you look at 2020, that was when COVID hit. It hit us and it hit the industry and hit us extremely hard. We lost 20% of that tax revenue that we use to promote the county. And the experts in the industry told us that we would never see 20, or we wouldn't see 2019 numbers until 2026. Now, that scared the bejesus out of me. When COVID hit, we completely stopped marketing. We just kind of sat in a holding pattern to see, to see what would happen. But as you can see, in 2021, we rebounded pretty quickly. And I 100% believe that is because we are in Nebraska and we are in a rural area, we're less populated than everywhere else, and this was a great place for people to come and feel somewhat comfortable with COVID-19 still, still out there and still being a threat. So, um. With that, some of, the way, our travel segments that we focus on here in Lincoln County, I just kind of wanted you guys to understand that a little bit. Why our numbers, why we bounced back so quickly is because leisure traveler is our, our number one target market. That's moms and dads and grandmas and grandpas that are out there traveling and the younger people. We have a great leisure market because we have so many active things to do outside, plus, you know, a lot of history as well. Bus groups and sports are both, you know, are, are mid-range. There's lots of room to grow in the sports tourism era, area, and mostly that's because we don't have the facilities that we need. And I'll show you the next slide and you'll see why. Meetings and conventions, we used to be fairly strong in meetings and conventions, but once the Sand Hills Holiday Inn, Holiday Inn sold, Romana sold, it slowly has went down. And we just keep losing more and more every year, honestly. So, but our bus groups are strong. They are, they have actually finally come back. This year, we're seeing them probably around 90% of what they were before. They were slow to trickle in, kind of getting amped up from COVID. They started. They started with a half a bus, and then they slowly saw that people were still traveling. Even my mother, against my best wishes, was traveling in 2021. So, but meetings and conventions all across the state and nation is probably the number one segment that has been hit. And it's, a lot of that is because the platforms out there like Zoom and Google Meets, it's just easier to use those now. Businesses prefer that because of the cost. We don't like it so much because our networking, you guys probably see it too. You don't get to really know that person behind that screen at all. So, that's a segment. They say it's coming back. Carney, I visit with them quite a bit, and their meetings and conventions are coming back strong. So, that is a good sign for all of us.
Lisa, what would be the percentage of that pie chart for Carney on meetings and conventions?
It's completely reversed. They are, yes, their sports tourism is probably the same, but it will grow because they have a new fieldhouse that they're building. Their meetings and conventions is probably fifty percent easy, if not more.
Because of the facilities.
Because they have wonderful facilities.
Wonderful, Mort and Paul.
Yeah. The Unis family has done wonders for the Carney community. And I would like to see North Platt move stronger in that direction.
Well, Michaela, you find us a sugar daddy like.
We gave you Jerry on your board.
That, and I don't know if you guys know, Paul has hotels in Hastings and in Columbus, and I believe he's opening some in Grand Island as well. So, he, you know, he's well diversified. He knows what he's doing. So, he's definitely an asset for that community. Even their bus groups, I would say, is less, probably less than ours. We just have that much, you know, more to do activity-wise for them.
Even if we could find a public-private relationship like they have, like Carney has with Paul, that would be huge for our community.
Yes, most definitely.
Jerry?
Is that the guy?
The next slide.
We shut him up.
Okay, this one is just, shows you all the lodging tax revenue or lodging taxes, I guess, for each month in 2020. The pink line that you see is what it was in 2021. And you see those months that, you know, January, February, November, December, October, where it's low, and that's because we just don't have the indoor facilities. We have tons of activities, as you can see, in, you know, May, June, and July. There are things that this community would support and would do if we just had the facilities to do them in. And that's the part that we're lagging. 2022, we set, I believe it was seven all-time records for the month of March, the month of April, May, June, July, October, and December.
Wow.
Yeah. So, that just leads into the economic impact of travel and tourism here in Lincoln County. Every other year, on the odd years, we hire Dean Runyon and Associates to do an economic impact study for us for the whole entire county. The last one they did for us was 2021. So, what you're going to see now on 2022 is just a good estimate of us being up six point eight nine percent. So, but they estimate that our revenue that we generate every year for 2021 was a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. And that's a huge chunk of this economy. So, they also break it down to us and show us what our employment is. About one thousand five hundred and sixty employees are employed in the tourism industry in Lincoln County. Those earnings of those employees is thirty million. The tax revenue that's generated is ten million. Three point one million stays here locally in Lincoln County, and seven point five goes to the state government. They also break down our travelers. And they are telling us that when people travel to Lincoln County, there's two of them. And they, on average, travel for two days. They'll stay here for two days. They spend three hundred and twenty dollars per trip. And they estimate that five hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred visited us in 2021. So, with all of what we do, we're basically a marketing agency. We market this community. Our biggest asset in that is our website, and it is visitnorthplatt.com. This is how we monitor and structure how well we're doing in the industry. If you will remember back how we came out of 2020 so aggressively, you all know that there was a huge bunch of pent-up demand out there because people hadn't been allowed to travel, were encouraged not to travel. Some of them were even told in 2021 to not travel, but they decided to do it anyway. So, during 2020 and 2021, they were shopping and looking. Remember that we did not advertise. We did not spend, we stopped advertising, I believe it was the fifteenth of March, 2020. So, all of this is organic following. A website, unique user is the first time that they've ever come to our website. And the session is every time someone comes. They may come, have been on their last month and coming back. But that's all created just out of want and need. And we did a bunch of organic Facebook posts that we didn't pay for. We just were feeding all the time. So, 2021, I think those numbers are so high is because they were still out there shopping. 2022, we start to kind of taper off, but we're still higher than we were in 2019. We also started redoing our website in December. So, those numbers went down dramatically because it wasn't a hundred percent yet. So. This is our calendar of events. Every Wednesday, we send out an email to about three thousand people, most of them locals, some of them were not, and let them know everything that is happening in the next ten days. We did this mostly for our hotels in the beginning when we started this calendar in twenty-two thousand three. But it has become the calendar in the community. When you see events at The Telegraph, on The Telegraph, or in the news, on the KNOP, or anywhere else, they're getting those feeds from us because this is the calendar that everybody puts their things on. Any individual can put something on there on their own. They don't have to go through us, but we have to click that it's okay and let it go up. But as you can see, those numbers continue to climb.
I mean, if you compare pre-pandemic and eliminate your rebound year, look at the difference between 2019 and 2022. Incredible.
Quarter double.
Incredible.
Yep, the pandemic really made people look at other places. We all, you know, Colorado, we saw a lot of people come out of Colorado in 2021 because they were still, you know, shut down a lot, and we were more open. So. This is our social media followers. This is Facebook and Instagram. Those are the two that we focus on. And again, you can see how much we've increased through that. This is our social media engagement. This is organic posts and paid posts. And again, I'll remind you, 2020 was not paid. That was all organic. We focused that summer on letting locals know what there was to do here locally. Gave them all kinds of things that they could do safely in a COVID environment. But while they, you know, that was there for the whole, all of our followers to follow, not just the locals. And I will tell you that we didn't spend any more money than we did in nineteen, in 2021, or 2022 in social media. Kiosks. We have thirteen kiosks that are around the community. Two of them are in businesses that are open twenty-four-seven attractions. One is at the Fort Cody. One is at the Golden Spike. The rest, we have one at our office that is outside, so they can touch it through the window. And then the rest of them are at our hotels. So, again, you can see a huge jump in activity. These sessions equal three point nine hours a day.
And that's just when people are actually standing in front of them and paging through the information?
Yes. And that's equivalent to a part-time person working twenty-six hours a week.
Wow.
So, they are worth their weight in gold to us. Minutes is the red. That's how much time they're on. And the sessions is every time somebody starts the session. This is our visitors at the visitor's center. In this, you can really see the COVID drop, and the drop kind of continues. We've always had brochures outside our office. During COVID, we added another pocket that had smaller ones so we could put, I think there's five local ones that we can put out there, plus our big magazines. And, you know, you see that drop in 2020. The blue is when they come inside, and the green is when they just grab a magazine or something from outside. And they're still more comfortable, even today, just grabbing that and leaving rather than coming inside, which is kind of interesting.
Do you see an age differential on that?
I wish I was out front to watch that all the time. Our volunteers are supposed to be watching that. I need to have them kind of pay attention, but it depends. And it amazes me that we get quite a few people at night log into our kiosk, which is like at midnight or two or three. They must be walking or just got in town too. So, but I can't tell you exactly, Jerry.
I could go back and look at our camera every day, but.
From what I've observed when I've been out at your meetings, it seems like folks my age are a little more comfortable grabbing a piece of paper than clicking on.
I, there's a lot of people that are still wearing masks too. And they usually come from Colorado or California. You can kind of tell on their license plate when I've been up and noticed when people are coming in, so. We still do our grants. Our grants, every year, we do our promotional fund grants quarterly now. This year, our board listened to forty-two applications. Does that sound like you listened to forty-two applications?
Yes, it does.
At least, I think.
And they awarded one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars. Every year, they give away about ninety-eight percent of our budget with that. And every year. I'm sorry, invest. Yes, yes. And that is, you know, it's great because I am a firm believer that these grants have helped our community grow and be where it is because they enable those attractions to promote themselves and make their attraction or their event better. And that's really, really important.
Lisa, I get a question before we move on. Looking at all your numbers, your revenue growth and so forth, you know, our colleague, Commissioner Brunson was, you know, were talking about your report that was coming up. But he's in Lincoln today testifying, so he couldn't be here. But we were wondering collectively, have you guys given thought about what a recino operation would do to your numbers? Have you projected that at all? Because there's so much talk about that. And we're like everyone else. We're just sitting and watching and observing.
I haven't, we have not projected it, except we go off of what they are telling us that it will do as far as, you know, bringing in. But it will make people stay here longer, most definitely. We'll see that. Yes, yes, yeah, for sure.
The saturation issue is another one for another day. But I was just curious if you brainstormed that. Sorry to interrupt your train of thought, but while you were talking about showing these revenue growth.
Yeah, I know it will help tremendously. It will. And because we're on pathway to both, you know, on Highway eighty-three, or excuse me, Highway eighty-three and I-80, that is so important, that's, you know, we are in the cross point of all travel. And we're really lucky. So, it's, our casino will be the if, when, if and when, when we get it, will be the only one on I-80. I don't know if you guys realize that. So, it will be hugely important.
I see.
And it.
I hadn't thought about that.
Yep. So, that we also give away a permit fund grants. Sorry, invest. I got to get that in my brain. Invest. And again, without these, our attractions.
You are pushing buttons, right?
I didn't touch.
We invest. Without them, without this grant process, we wouldn't see the growth that we do.
You're going to have to look at Silly Joe for a little bit.
But they have given away, excuse me, invested. I am, I am going to cross my, wash my mouth out. So, when I get back to the office. So, they had six grant applications come in. They totaled six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars worth of ask this year. They all came in in October. They were for investments of thirteen million dollars in improvement in facilities here in Lincoln County. And they gave them six hundred and eighteen thousand, I believe. And that's very important. Within the last two years, this board has invested over a million dollars into facilities, into this community. Whether they've used those funds or will use those funds, we've seen that potential. And they know how important that is that we invest in this community, so.
Still a strong supporter of the historical museum, then?
Most definitely.
As you've been historically.
Yes.
Most definitely.
That was one thing. It was kind of near and dear to some of us because they don't have a lot of.
No.
Well, it's near and dear to us too. You know what I mean?
Yes.
It's a huge advocate for the community, especially with the Christmas out there and how we, yeah, absolutely, a hundred percent.
And Lisa, something that you might want to also point out is there was, some of those investments were in this community, but in other communities as well.
We did have grant asks from Wallace and Sutherland, and they all got raise funds. In the past, we've had Brady and Maxwell and, yes. So, we always see that opportunity to invest in those communities, and it's important that we do.
So, just about everyone who filled out an application got something, correct?
Yes, just about, just about.
Very nice.
May not have gotten their total ask, but they were considered.
Definitely considered. So, this is our second most popular video besides our tanking one. I don't know if you guys have seen this one, so I'm going to play it for you, and hopefully the sound works. Maybe. Maybe.
Hi, I'm Buffalo Bill.
I'm Bella.
We're here at Lincoln County Historical Museum. I'm in Good Scott, Georgia.
I'll try.
All right, Bill, what are we looking for here?
We need to find the biggest animal in the museum. I think it's you.
Well, I am pretty big. All right, but seriously, if this thing's so big, where on earth could it be hiding?
I dare you to turn around.
Why? Look at it. That it? That thing's huge, look at that size of that thing. All right, check it off the list, let's keep going. All right, they said it would be behind a seven-story house.
We're not in a spy movie, we're just looking for a yellow food.
Yellow food, like a banana bush, like a lemonade ring pie?
It's behind you.
And these green bushes?
Green.
Oh, this is corn?
Yes.
You don't want corns, yellow.
And that is?
Check it off the list. See, I'm here.
You went twenty minutes before you did, but okay.
All right, Bill, what's next?
Where does Buffalo Bill really need to go? It is red, white, and blue.
Like an American themed bathroom?
No, obviously the barber shop, you're not going to Tisha.
Hey, you don't talk about Buffalo Bill's hair like that. Besides, you'll never get this done.
Um, I think it's time.
Oh, that's fine, just cross it off the list, let's go to the next one.
Where can you find where the river men slept?
Well, they probably slept underneath in a nice shaded area.
No, they slept in the booths.
What, really?
Yeah, I'll show you.
Bill, Bill, I can't find that thing by someone anywhere.
Oh, we found it.
What, that? That's not a milk and seafood.
My patience is becoming thin. Really?
All right, look there.
Where do the bad guys go?
Well, Congress?
I have a big mustache.
Let me out, open the door. Come on, it's not funny anymore. Let me out, Bill.
Take off the mustache and I'll let you out.
Take off the mustache.
Ha ha, very funny. Oh, I'm a bad guy, okay, all right, here we go. Sandwich hunts, fun with history. That's why I give Lincoln County Historical Museum, Buffalo Bills,
and Bella.
Buffalo Book Club. All right, come on, Bill, I think the next one's this way.
Anywhere, Seattle, it's this way.
Even though it's long, ridiculously long, it's, people really enjoyed that one. So that's what we have for you, if you guys have any other questions.
You mentioned several times needing facilities. Do I recall maybe a year or so ago that the DNN Event Center was in here with you? Are they still planning on expanding their operation?
They are. They let their grant funds expire, but they are reapplying again this year.
Nice.
And we've moved up our grant process. It will be in, the intent to apply is due in April, April first. And those presentations, this board will hear in August, so.
Because I know their facility brings a lot
It does.
into North Platte as far as sporting and just weekend events for local people, so.
Tad was focusing and hoping he would get a lot of those turn, was it turnkey? Money that the state had to give back. And he didn't, he only got like ninety thousand of them, and he needed, you know, a bigger chunk than that to help him.
Yeah, building costs right now, or?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions? It's been my pleasure to be a voting member on that board. Previously, I was a non-voting member, but it's been my pleasure to work with this group. And I can attest to the fact that applications are scrutinized fairly significantly. Awards are made that would bring the most into this county. And I applaud you for your work.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks for what you guys do.
You're probably glad I gave you all that advice on the Facebook stuff and...
I did, yes, thank you, Jerry. Couldn't do without you things.
I haven't found your Facebook page, though.
Next agenda item is ten... Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Okay, it is, let's move on to our next agenda item. Discuss documentation for rural ambulance funds. Tyler, may I impose on you to give us a little background here?
Sure. As the board is well aware, you passed a resolution in regards to the city providing advanced life support services out of Lincoln County. For those watching at home, there you go.
That was probably Chris.
It was. This board entered into the interlocal with the city providing the traditional advanced life support services out of Greater Lincoln County. That is one part of what used to be a multi-part deal. The second part of that is the city then agrees to enter into interlocals with the villages and rural fire districts to provide that advanced life support to them. The third part of the deal used to be, and may again be, that this board would then turn around and send some matter of funding out to the villages and local, or the rural fire districts to help offset some of that advanced life support cost. The formula that had been utilized in calculating how much was sent to them has been scrapped because it had no basis in reality whatsoever. It was based on valuation of the district or the village where the money was going, which had absolutely no bearing whatsoever on usage. And so it was, well, we scrapped it, and we didn't put anything back in its place. And so at this point, I have been fielding some questions from members of rural fire districts, some of whom are in attendance, about where was our money? And the best I've been able to tell them is, gather up the documentation you have about what your actual outlay is for this service, bring it to the board, and we'll see what they can do. And so that's why they're here, because I'm passing the buck on to you four.
Okay, the cost of the services, now that, what are the services that we're talking about?
That would be just the advanced life support service. Frankly, the better people to answer that are probably sitting out here because they're the ones that actually deal with it.
Okay, so it looks like we do have some folks here. Anybody who want to speak to this topic? Oh.
Anybody else?
Please state your name and sign in for us, if you would, please.
Rourke Paulman. I am the current Secretary of Treasury of the Southern Rural, of which you approved the merger with the village. So we're all, all under the rural fire now. And we provide the ambulance service in conjunction with the Hershey Rural and have for some time, and I'll ask those guys to kind of weigh in on what that was. But I, I myself have not been a part of that interlocal. But we'll, we're gonna revisit those once we're kind of finalized here at the end of June. So how did we get here? And I think Tyler did a good job of, I asked, how did North Platte enter into an agreement with the county and basically go from around fifty to seventy-two thousand on the interlocal for ALS, for advanced life support? And I didn't understand the process that we went through that. And originally, that interlocal was an addendum on the back that had the list of the other villages and kind of the breakdown. And we really didn't know how that number was arrived at, whether it was through the MFO, which I assume that's the number that we use to categorize based off the valuation. But it was, it's a significant amount of money across the county in terms of its impact on each and every one of them. I can only speak to ours and to a little bit about the Hershey relationship because we provide ambulance service for Hershey. In terms of the equipment, they support with their own volunteers. They too will join in that EMS service. So, so one of the things that was a little startling to me was we do a lot of work on the interstate. We get the bulk of the calls from that Hershey all the way to the Paxton, Keith County line. And when we bill for, we use a billing service. And currently, the billing service that we use, we're gonna switch over to the one that are in the process of evaluating, switching over to the one that city of North Platte uses. We had some inconsistencies with the billing and actually what we were getting reimbursed for. And so, and actually getting paid out of that. And then in turn, we have an agreement with North Platte to share in that advanced life support ambulance service. So it's up to half of the fee, not to exceed three hundred dollars. And so that billing schedule is here. I didn't make copies because I really thought this would be a discussion because the way Tyler and I left it is, we just, we just don't know where we are. So that's kind of a little bit of the background. But here's some numbers with Medicare and Medicaid and the insurance companies. It's a little rough on the rurals. We grossed billed about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents in 2022. So again, that is Hershey and Sutherland combined gross. So once Medicare and Medicaid get done with that, of course, just like our own bills, they write that down. So they wrote it down to a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two thirty-one sixty-four. That is predicated on a billing schedule of approximately about six hundred dollars to eight hundred dollars per occurrence, in other words, per visit. So we can get into the details, there's a tier of fees that go into that. And in the process that that goes through, we still have out-of-pocket expenses. Whether it happens or not, we have fuel, we have people, we have, we have whatever it is, supplies that go inside of there. Out of that hundred and fifty-five thousand, we got seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. And that, that is inclusive of a dab of 2021, I think, as well, too. Because this is, this is over almost a two-year period about how people pay or how the insurance companies reimburse. So we're incurring almost double the expense and literally only getting half. And so that, that ALS part is a portion of this. But we were literally leaning into that compensation, that difference in what the county was supporting through that to offset this part of the difference. So we're, so we also, I just wanted to let you know, if a, if a care home makes a call, we transport for nothing. We don't charge because they won't pay, so we just stay out of that. And that's okay. That's, we understand as volunteers that we gotta, there are some services that we provide, but there's still an inherent cost that goes with that. So right now, today, there's about seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, including the leftovers that are in outstanding receivables that we may or may not ever get paid. Well, then that then becomes with the interlocal with North Platte, there's an expectation that we owe against that money to make a check back to the city. Well, we've had to kind of switch the lane. Dennis has been great now, let's say, too. We're trying to figure this out in a better way that essentially we end up having to put like pending on that, and we may or may not ever get paid. And so at that point, it's just zeroed out, and we move on to the next year. Roughly, we're only keeping about twenty-four months total, Roger? You guys might introduce yourselves real quick, just so we know what the representation is of who's in the room, or maybe you know everybody.
Okay, we will as soon as you finish.
Okay. And then Hershey, at the time, Hershey was receiving about fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and forty-nine cents through the county or through this, through this formula. And then they moved sixty-five percent of that over to us to help offset some of those costs. So obviously, that's gonna go away as well, too, to them, as well as to the offset back to us. So right now, that's, it was, once I started digging into this, I'm going, holy smokes. When you only have about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar revenue base or a hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue base, it doesn't take long to chew through this in supplies alone to be able to continue to operate an ambulance service. We just recently ordered a new ambulance, it's three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We got a grant for seventy-five thousand, we got approved, I believe, is that right? We applied for the full two hundred thousand, but pretty much across the state, everybody, I think even Dennis, I think, told me Thompson that they got seventy-five thousand. So we have enough that we can make the offset in cash and make that work. But operationally, it is, it's a challenge. It literally is a challenge, just as volunteers to make this happen.
Okay, Tyler, tell me about this formula.
Can I just say one thing real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
Keep your train of thought. I just wanted to make my numbers work, because you said you got about, you got seventy-five outstanding, you got about seventy-five left in the bank. You ordered the ambulance at three hundred, you get a seventy-five grant. That leaves two and a quarter that you said we've got cash to handle. So we'll come back around to that, let me think about it.
Yep.
Please go ahead.
So the formula is nearly as I could reverse engineer it with the help of Joe's archival knowledge, with the understanding that this was something that my predecessor made up a long time ago. Is nearly as we can tell, it is based on that district of the village or that rural fire district's proportional share of the total valuation of the county. That's it. Had nothing to do with population, had nothing to do with actual
Years.
ambulance usage. So that was, that was one critical factor. When I read through that and I figured it all out, and I presented that to the board, that was something that I didn't feel was right. The other problem that I recall the board taking was the little language at the very end of those interlocals that we had, which basically said, any money not spent for advanced life support can go to, and I'm paraphrasing, basically any ambulance use whatsoever. And there was no limitation on that, as long as it could be called ambulance use. And that was obviously kind of a loose end. And that was, those were the two catalysts, I believe, for the board not entering into those seventeen other interlocals at this point. And that's why we're here today. And Rourke is giving us some information that this board can actually use to consider a need for the money, as opposed to just, here's a check.
Now, do I understand correctly that each of those entities have a levy that they get tax money from the county?
The rurals all have their own no levy. And obviously, the villages have their own levy. And how that all interplays with the MFOs is something I'm still trying to digest. But yes, they do get their own tax dollars.
So where do we go from here?
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Right, your numbers you were talking about, are those like district-wide? Are they just within the city limit, village's limit, or?
That is within our district.
Within our whole district, okay.
So rural and city?
Yes, that'd be correct, yep.
Okay, so my second question pops in my head, back to Joe's pointing out your discrepancy in budget. Are we maximizing our levies that you have the authority to utilize?
Yes, yes, totally.
Rather than come to us with...
So we take the three-point, the, well, it comes before you guys every year. We have always exercised the three percent and then continue to maintain our levy. So we have not done anything else in terms of bonding or anything like that. And we can't do that for operations money anyway. So what we did, and so back to your question about the dollars, Joe, is we built the fire hall through the rural, and we had saved up enough cash through the rural. We had built our own trucks, we'd been very, really, I guess, really close to the vests and paid cash for our fire hall. In the same time, we asked the volunteers in the village to hold off on an ambulance purchase for five years. Typically, the, Roger and Toby helped me on this, but in terms of the technology that is inside of those and keeping your certification for the ambulance and the equipment that goes inside of there, is, we stretched it as far as we could go. And so over that time, we've saved enough money operationally that we have enough cash with the seventy-five thousand that we could go ahead and order the ambulance. It will darn near wipe out our entire cash reserve. It'll be down to just basically operating money, that'll be about it. Well, the numbers that I put together were about fifteen to twenty-five thousand, depending on what we do, if we get anything for our old ambulance. And for the most part, you know, that's a five or ten thousand dollar deal. So that's where we are currently. It is around operations. We watch very closely what, what our, what our revenue side is, making sure that their, that their education and their investment in the equipment and that, because they're all volunteers, we are entirely volunteers. And so making sure that those people are cared for and have the appropriate equipment is the cornerstone of the EMS volunteer system. And that's, that's where we were, is that was part of our cash flow. And then I kind of discovered the document with North Platte. And I basically asked the mayor, and I actually asked Jerry to come, but Tyler came and did a great job in laying the city attorney and explained how this whole process worked. And I think, I was probably most taken back that there wasn't something sent to all of... And I think I was probably most taken back that there wasn't something sent to all of the rurals that just a letter that says, hey, this this is this is unfounded distribution, you know, let's figure out a different way. But it was really, quite frankly, a discovery. And and Tyler did a great job of going, hey, that it's right. We're all discovering this, but North Platt is getting somehow compensated for their ALS with with the rural. So that's why we're sitting here is is I don't know what the total dollars were. I didn't bring that appendix. In fact, I should have got my email today. It was a chunk of change.
I didn't think that North Platt was getting compensated for their advanced life support for the rurals. I thought that was within the North Platt rural.
That's what I meant, yeah. That's what I'm sorry, Joe. That's right.
I'm with you.
That's right, because I think you helped negotiate that, I think, didn't you?
Well, yeah.
Sure. Yes, he was right there. So what I had suggested to Rorik was a couple of things. One, I said, yeah, the county attorney's office probably should have sent a letter to all these people since I had all seventeen of them on a sheet of paper and said, hey, the board didn't do this. But at the same time, it's also not necessarily our job to reach out and say, by the way, your free money is drying up. So we got through that and I explained how we got to the numbers that we got to as best I could. And then I said, when this was created, there probably wasn't any data as to what the usage was or what it was costing. I said, so we had to figure something out. Not perfect, but it got money going. At this point, all these rurals and the villages know what they're outlaying on ALS service. They know what their need is based on actual usage. So let's come to the table with that instead of just made up numbers and go from there. Because if I'm not mistaken, there is money budgeted for it based on.
Very little bit.
Yeah, well, it's like thirty bucks or something.
Yeah.
There there is some money budgeted for it based on the prior formula.
Mr. Chairman, recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Because it's way easier for me when it's somebody else, but at this time, I'll I'll volunteer. Because we committee has worked well for other things. You might want to consider putting together a committee to work with one or two representatives, however, they want to put their group together so that we can sit down with Tyler and try to put her hand around this, try to get a handle on this and come back with some kind of recommendation because right now there are a lot of unknowns.
Yes, I think that's.
And I would volunteer to be one of those two members.
I think that'd be a great idea. Would you want to work with Tyler in that regard?
Sure, I need somebody else to do a little work. I'd like to have somebody else in the board.
I would work with him.
Thank you.
I do have a question before.
Sure.
Back to your, this is a big picture question. And I don't know the answer, but you know, we pay, the county pays for our employee group, the MASA, emergency fire rescue, ambulance, air ambulance, all that. Because everybody has these horror stories about getting an ambulance call that costs you twenty five grand and you don't have twenty five grand. And so when you were talking about capturing your expenses, I'm wondering out loud, not knowing how this works, do we aggregately, all of our fire districts, do we need to be more aggressive in how we bill to the end user? Like you mentioned the interstate. How does that work, Rorik? I mean, I'm.
Again, I don't know well enough about how right now we contract with a service to do the billing.
Okay.
So basically, we send into them the call that we made, the mileage that it went to, and then whether that was BLS or ALS and basic life support or advanced life support. And at at the time, and then at a hundred and fifteen dollars a mile one way, I believe, no transport. I mean, there there's several different pieces to the puzzle. But ultimately, what happens is is are you just going to leave somebody out there? And that, I mean, it is about caring for the citizens while they're traveling through.
I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm just saying you hear all these stories about, oh, I got an ambulance call and cost me fifteen thousand dollars. So are we on a comprehensive level, all of our departments, are we doing doing them an injustice by not addressing the fee structure for those responses?
I don't.
That's just, it's a rhetorical.
The Medicare Medicaid thing, you know, it it writes off, I didn't do the percentages, but you can divide a hundred and fifty five thousand by a hundred and eighty seven. That's the first whack.
Yeah.
So so there is off your fee, it's the same percentage off your fee then. So the six hundred dollars that you would have gotten is already going to take that first step or that first whack off there. Then the next part of that is is okay, there the bandages, the fuel, the every all the supplies that are inherent with getting that person either in into that ambulance. And then we typically have we if if we meet North Platt for ALS or or for whatever reason, we used to unload and load the patient back up. Today, you know, working with Dennis, you know, that paramedic jumps in with us and away we go. And we get let's get let's get that person cared for. And then that fee structure at that point is is worked out. And even at that point, we may or may not be compensated and we don't have a good way. I mean, we have it on our books, but I can't tell you with any kind of certainty whether we're even going to be paid or not. The insurance companies are tough to get along with under that under that ambulance piece. So if you got a thousand dollar ambulance, call it a hundred and fifteen dollars a mile and you got a six hundred dollar fee, let's call it a thousand bucks to get yourself into the North Platt hospital or into Oklahoma, whatever the case may be. That 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 literally is kind of that that piece of the puzzle. There could be more or less of them trying to generalize it enough. But that is a that to me is is taken care of and using it using the best resources we got at the lowest cost. But we may or may not be paid for any of that.
I think the chief might have over added that.
Yeah, Tyler, would it be appropriate to have all the representatives here for the record state their names?
Sure.
Okay, let's start with you, Toby.
I'm Toby Tobias and I'm the Fire Chief for Hershey Fire District.
Do you want him to sign in, Jerry?
Only if he's going to come up here.
Okay.
Roger, I'm the Sutherland Fire Chief.
I'm Len Swanson, Secretary Treasurer for the Walrusville Fire Board.
Chris Clausmer, President of the Hershey Fire Board.
Dennis Brown, Secretary Treasurer for Hershey Rural.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, Rorik, I I think we're on the same page. I was thinking in fairness to you guys, you various departments, just trying to make sure we're getting as much reclaim as we can for the end user, particularly on the interstate where you're, I'm sure you have a heavy response, but.
Well, and just again, to put it in context, we go from roughly Hershey gets twenty four thousand bucks to zero. Sutherland between the rural and the village is about that same amount of money. We go to zero. So all at once, we're filling a forty eight thousand dollar gap, you know, that that just is gone. And we're we're scrambling, quite frankly, to figure out, you know, how do we how do we make that connection? Well, mine was literally to go just follow the paperwork, which was which was the interlocal between the county and and North Platt.
Okay. Any other questions for Rorik and his?
We'll be getting together then, won't we?
Yep.
What I, no, I better not even say it. Now we're on TV, I can't make my little funny cute jokes anymore. I'll get in trouble, somebody will call me and say, I saw that.
Okay, so I'll leave that up to you, gentlemen, with Tyler to set up a meeting with these folks.
So let's because I'm not very good at that. Would you get together out there and give us half a dozen dates over the next two weeks that we can look at? And and for lack of anything better, make a person we can contact. You do it from there and we'll get together and make sure.
You want us to get that to Tammy or who do we?
Sure, that's great.
Rebecca or?
Anybody.
Or Tyler, since he's going to have to be a key piece.
Oh, even better yet.
So so.
His office is basically big, we're going to meet in there.
I'm going to put the ball in your court.
That'll work. That'll work fine.
Okay, thank you very much for your information and we will do our best to get at the bottom of this and because we need to provide those essential services, no doubt about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your work.
Thank you.
Well, you just did off another one.
I know, I know.
Okay. Do we need, is there a need for a closed session? Okay, next agenda item is hear concerns from elected officials, department heads or their representatives.
Are you done with claims or you still have some?
I got one. No, we got a couple. Got one, two, three.
I'm not the holdup.
No, I was.
We hadn't we hadn't said anything yet.
I've been signing and talking.
That was that group lady saying they better not sign and they better listen. So Rorik, Saturday in Carney watching, I assume is grandson wrestling, but I don't know that. And and several people from Sutherland had a good turnout at districts.
I had no trouble throwing you and Tyler on the bus.
Hey, it's all good for me.
Turnabout's fair play.
That's right.
Turnabout's fair play once in a while.
Jason, do you have anything?
Jason Schultz, Lake County Highway Superintendent.
Yeah, sure. Um, so just a couple of things on new hires. So we have been doing some interviews, trying to get a few more people on board at the roads department. So we did conduct two interviews, decided to hire one of those, so hopefully they'll be coming on shortly. So just to update you there, we'll continue. We still need a couple more positions to fill, to fill out our group.
Background?
What's that?
Background. Get the guy, girl or guy and past road experience or anything like that or just?
Um, a lot of, the one individual we selected has a lot of heavy equipment experience and also CDL class A experience. So yeah, I think he's going to be a good good hire for us, so.
Thank you.
Um, we also are planning on switching to our four day weeks, starting on March twentieth. So I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
We got time change coming up here.
It'll be on the, well, it's technically the nineteenth, I think. So it'll be right at the, yeah, time change. Our tractor delivery did get delayed just a day or two, so hopefully we'll be getting that tomorrow. So just to update you on that. And then talked about some of our previous, our invoices that are going to be coming in for some of our repairs. So there'll be some rather large ones coming in for the two engines and the differential. They all got done about the same time, so those will all be hitting out at the same time. So you'll probably see those next week.
Engines for?
Graders. So we had two engines and then plus we had a differential that was a pretty hefty bill as well, so those will be coming in.
There's room for that in the existing budget.
For right now, but yeah, it'll put us pretty tight on our repair budget. We probably will end up overrunning that, but.
District two has got some extra funds.
District two does.
What?
Has extra funds.
Did he say two?
I did. I didn't think you'd hear me clear down there.
That was all I had.
Uh, the new hire, how soon will he be on board?
Um, we're hoping within a week, so yeah, yep.
Still working on the one in six?
Yes, yep.
And we will have a subcommittee meeting tomorrow morning on that regard, correct?
Sounds good, yep. We'll be ready for that.
Very good. Thanks, Jason.
Still on for Friday afternoon?
Yep.
Right, I didn't tell him a time yet.
Yeah, probably whatever.
Two, I don't know. I thought maybe we'd leave that open till we get closer.
Yep. Yeah, I wouldn't want to push it probably too late just to give us time to work with.
Yeah, well, you got a preference?
One in one thirty.
One o'clock? Meet even there at one or one thirty?
Yeah.
Are you going to be in town? I'll just run over and jump in with you guys.
Okay.
I'll tell him one thirty, how's that?
Okay.
And I'll send it before I forget it.
Is it closer to you that's going that way or?
Um, it's the same distance, actually.
Wherever you want to hit yourself.
Are you going to plan in zoning?
Yeah. But I'm not staying for Friday.
Friday.
Um, we have to go north of Brady. It's the same literally to go back, well, one way or the other, but time you get there and go around the horn.
Todd, do you have anything for us?
No, not till next week.
Okay. Becky, do you have anything for us?
No.
Tammy.
Tammy, how did you come out on the retirement funds party? Did did you get paid?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you get to see me in the morning, Drissa?
You can call in if you want. So to you, call in, comment.
I'll be by.
Okay. Do you have time now, too? Nobody's helping you.
Yeah. Anything else to come before the board? I think it's time to adjourn this meeting.